I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order on Tuesday, April 22, 2014 at 7:40 PM in the Twinsburg Government Center. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer, here. Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Suresi?
Here.
Mr. Fury? Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Okay, please join us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Suresi.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us. In planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg, give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I need approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 8, 2014. Are there any changes or corrections?
None here.
Nope.
I'm hearing none. The minute stand is written. Shannon, are there any awards or presentations?
Not this evening.
Nothing? Okay, how about audience participation?
Yes. Daisy Walker?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Mayor and Council.
Aye.
Daisy Walker, current Chair of the Twinsburg Environmental Commission. Just to let you know that the Twinsburg Environmental Commission were invited to an Earth Day at Cleveland Clinic Twinsburg Family Health and Surgery Center. That was today from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. There were a lot of walk-ins that came in. We were talking about the -- we gave them out watershed information. We talked about recycling, and we gave out recycling flyers. We gave out Tinkers Creek watershed brochures, flyers on Keep Twinsburg Naturally Beautiful. We have quite a few people who signed up. There were people from Aurora, Youngstown, Macedonia, Northfield, and they really appreciated the work that the city of Twinsburg is doing. They wanted to know if they could sign up for our cleanup, and I said it's just for Twinsburg residents only. And we also passed out gardening information from our sprouting gardeners. And there were quite a few people who really wanted to attend. And we were delighted and to be a part of Cleveland Clinic Family Health and Surgery Earth Day. They will be inviting us back next year. They did appreciate everything that we did. And not only did I attend, Lynn Mutter was there, John Boyko and Louis Farmer were there also. So we had a great turnout. We had a lot of fun. We met a lot of people, so we hope to be doing this on an annual basis. So are there any questions from council?
No.
Daisy, I would like to say thank you because not only is it a good thing to promote Earth Day, but it's also really good that you as a representative of the city of Twinsburg, of the government, that you're there and you're interacting with our businesses and bringing other people forward to help support our businesses and their initiatives. So I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
And also, I just wanted to add too that Daisy and Lynn have been diligent in keeping track of the donations that have been given to the city of Twinsburg, and we're going to be turning that over to David where eventually he's going to do a resolution, Dave?
Yes.
Acknowledging all the contributors. So I want to thank you for staying on top of that as well to make sure we're compliant.
Great.
Thank you.
Is there any other audience participation?
There is none.
There is none, okay. Next, we'll move on to council communications and communication and committee reports. Mr. Yates?
Yes, the Parks and Rec Commission met on April 16. There is a lot of stuff going on with the Fitness Center. I know the Jump Start Sports Camp, they announced was taking sign-ups right now. There's a Cavs Camp coming on June 23. I guess for the month of March, we set three all-time attendance records. That was also prefaced by a lot of really bad weather, I guess led to that, but we did set some attendance records. Right now, Summer Swim Team is sign up for residents only. I know there's different dates also for pool sign-up for discounts. One was this past weekend. Let's see, there is going to be a new pool feature this year. So we're, I guess, getting rid of the mushroom. There's going to be a palm tree that's going to dump buckets of water. So I'm sure our kids will be excited about that. They're also going to be refinishing the slides, so that was also discussed.
I have my own.
And then also, for those that aren't aware, you know, the city has a full-time naturalist, Stanley Stein. I know he's part of the school systems, does a lot, but you know, he's just a great addition to the city. He does walks that are great for adults and children. I know he's got a couple coming up on May 9th and May 23rd where they're meeting at Dodge After Dark for hikes, so I would encourage anyone to join him. And then also, I did attend the adult Easter egg hunt this year, and it was, as always, a fantastic event. Derek did a great job with that. It's a lot of fun. You know, I took a couple of friends who couldn't believe that our city puts on such a fun adult event at Easter time that involves, you know, mud and eggs and flashlights and all that, so. But it was a great event that I always enjoy going to. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Yeah, the Environmental Commission met earlier this month. We did have a great interest from four students who are interested in being our student reps, so at the next meeting, we'll have to vote on two of them. But it was great to actually see such enthusiasm from them. And as Daisy said, they attended the Earth Day at the Cleveland Clinic. And then just a reminder to us on council, for May 17, Keep Twinsburg Naturally Beautiful, we have to pick a street that's in our ward, and we have to give that, I believe, to Derek by May 2. So looking forward to that program as well. So, and again, from what Daisy said, great job. You're doing a great job and really, I think, taking the Environmental Commission to the next level, so thank you, Daisy. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you. Good evening. My committees have not met within the last two weeks, but I just do have, I want to send out a, on a sad note, a message of condolence to Gary Goldner and the Goldner family on the passing of his wife Linda. And the reason I mention this tonight is Linda was very, she was active with our community. I met Linda some years ago when both of us served on the old recycle committee. And then later on, she went to serve on the environmental committee for quite a few years, I think, and I'm not even sure if she served with Daisy or not. But yeah, she was very active and very enthusiastic, and she loved her city, and she was a great friend and neighbor and, you know, somebody that I got to know in the ward. And I really appreciated her friendship and Gary's friendship. So again, I just want to send out my condolences to their family in this loss. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry to hear that. My committees have not met. However, we do have a community relations meeting on Thursday, April 26, here at the Government Center. I think it's at 5:30.
Yeah, I think that's the 24th, isn't it?
Twenty-fourth, Thursday.
Twenty-fourth. I can't get my date straight, so it's the 24th, okay? At the Government Center. And that's all I have. Mr. Suresi?
Thank you. The Charter Review Commission met again last evening, and they're zeroing in on probably eight or nine proposed amendments to the charter that will be coming to council. I'm thinking the end of May or the beginning of June for us to take a look at. Once this is finalized, I think we'll be close to the end at our next meeting on May 5. Once it's finalized, I believe we will have the commission members here at a council meeting doing a presentation explaining what their proposals are to us and why. So we'll have an update on that before it comes to us. And that's the only committee that has met, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
Yes, the Architectural Review Board met April 17. It had two items that they reviewed. The first one was 176 Dayflower, and it was replacing an old three-season room with a four-season room, and it was approved as noted. The next item was 10-185 Scenic View Drive. That's in the Corbett's Farm area. Was approved as noted. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDermott. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Stauffer. Good evening, everybody. Few announcements. First of all, I would like to start off by talking about the Active Shooter Drill that was held last Thursday at the high school. I really have to commend the school administration for moving this forward. It gave us an opportunity to practice in the event that we should have such an incident happen, God forbid. But nevertheless, our safety forces, the police department, the fire department, the SER team, which is our volunteer emergency response team, worked with the school administration, with the staff, with the teachers, and the students to conduct this drill. It was very emotional, but it was very necessary. And I believe that it was a great learning experience and a way for everybody to see how they should and how they can respond if such an incident occurs, and improvements that they can make, how they interact with each other. So again, my thanks to the school administration for moving this forward and to everybody who participated, the students. It was really, as I said, quite a critical drill and quite emotional, but they learned a lot from it. So thanks to everybody who participated in that. And, you know, nothing beats being prepared. So again, great training. We had a couple other events last week that I participated in, and one was the groundbreaking for the Liberty Park Nature Center. This is the nature center, 3,900 square feet, that is being built by Metro Parks Serving Summit County. Keith Shai, who was the director, was there. The commissioners from the Parks Board were in attendance, as well as some of our council members, Sam Scafidi, Ted Yates were there, and staff from the city, staff from Metro Parks. We are really, really excited. This is pretty amazing. In fact, the Akron Beacon Journal recently did an article about it and talked about what's going to be in that space. There's going to be a large front porch, a fireplace, an amphitheater. There'll be two new trails. One of them will be for people of all abilities. So it's another exciting addition to Liberty Park, and this thing is just really growing. Without that catalyst of the 900 acres that the city purchased, I don't think that we'd have the opportunity to be achieving what we're achieving right now. Again, that park is over 2,000 acres, and that's because of the additional property that Metro Parks Serving Summit County purchased after we purchased our 900. So they are great, great partners for the city of Twinsburg. This is going to be a great amenity for our entire region, not just our community. It's going to be a learning center for our students, for children, place to explore, to learn. And again, thank you so much to Metro Parks for putting that investment into the city of Twinsburg, into Liberty Park, and their continuing help with managing that entire property. So I just wanted to mention that. That was the groundbreaking. Sometime at the end of the year, we'll be at the open house, and of course, you'll all be invited to the open house at the nature center. Also, I attended the Heinans Regrand opening. You may have noticed, if you have shopped at Heinans and Twinsburg lately on Darrell Road, that they have a new entranceway. They've made many new improvements, not only in the parking lot but inside the store. The general manager was there, Bob Ihes, and they were very gracious. They had a wonderful event. Their employees attended. So did many of the shoppers that were there that morning. So I would like to thank them for their investment. It's not just an investment in their store, it's also an investment in the community to keep improving your properties and just giving back to the community. So congratulations to Heinans. It's a really nice addition. I hope you stop in and do a little shopping there and take a look at their new addition. Couple things coming up here. Well, first of all, we have a very nice letter thanking our service workers for snowplowing senior driveways, and this came from a family on Beers Circle. So thank you for taking the time to write and say that you appreciated the snowplow services, and we're happy that we're able to provide that service for our seniors. Excuse me. A couple of events coming up here. The National Day of Prayer Observance will be Thursday, May 1 at noon, and that will take place at the Summit County Courthouse. Of course, that is open to everybody. So if you would like to join in the National Day of Prayer, again, Thursday, May 1, Summit County Courthouse. There's also going to be a community and organization prayer breakfast that you can RSVP for. This is April 29 at 7:45 in the morning at Quaker Square. If you're interested in attending that breakfast, please let us know, and we'll get you some information about how you RSVP to that event. Also, Cleveland Water does this on a yearly basis, Saturday, May 10 at 10 o'clock in the morning. You can schedule a plant tour and tour the Balden Water Works Plant or the Crown Water Treatment Plant. If you're interested in that kind of thing, it always is an interesting tour. And if you're interested in that, or you'd like to take your family to it, this is National Drinking Water Week, and you can explore Cleveland and the water treatment plants Saturday, May 10 at 10 o'clock. Also, I want to mention a couple of our local businesses today. The first one is Chia USA. And Chia USA is located here in the city of Twinsburg. They do security monitoring with, for your baggage and for people who are traveling at the airlines. They also do mine detectors. And now they are moving into Major League Baseball. So we're really proud of that company, that they are diversifying, and they will be in some of our national sport teams in their ballparks, I guess. I couldn't think of the word for a minute. But anyway, congratulations to Chia USA. That's a big achievement. They were on the front of Crane's Cleveland Business. And also, Polte, who is building in Corbett's Farm, they were recognized in Crane's Cleveland Business. And I love the comment that they made about building new homes here on Corbett's Farm in Twinsburg. They said they love the location. Twinsburg is a great school district. It's near highways and close to job corridors in the region, and that's why they're excited to be back in the city of Twinsburg. The homes at Corbett's Farm are going to range from $300,000 to $500,000. With that, I guess we can turn it over now to our department heads, starting with Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Just would like to, really quick, schedule for a finance committee meeting, just to cover the first quarter. I'm thinking it may be the next council meeting. If we don't have any meetings scheduled before that, or sometime in May, definitely before, you know, we break for the summer.
13th, Karen?
Sure, that would be great. 6 o'clock or so? 6:30 or, doesn't matter. Half an hour probably good, you think?
You're reporting, so.
I just want to keep.
I think we need an hour.
Let's do 6 o'clock. Let's do 6 o'clock.
And this is the first meeting in May?
First meeting in May.
Okay.
First council meeting in May.
I know.
And also, maybe some of you have received some kind of communication from maybe residents within your ward who are trying to file their income tax. I just wanted to give you feedback. Today, I did get a call back from Regional Income Tax Agency, just to do a follow-up to see any additional calls, et cetera. But I just wanted to make note that the deadline was April 15 to file the local income tax. Unfortunately, there were many individuals who were filing right up until that day, and that did cause Rita's phones were not down, or they weren't dysfunctioning. But what happened was is that it caused a lot of people to jam their phone lines and even their internet communication. So with that being said, to resolve that, they did extend the deadline to April 21st, which was yesterday, and I did not receive any additional calls, and I've received maybe a handful in the desk, probably equally as many. But they did resolve it immediately, and they're making sure that they put in place to expand it and make sure it doesn't happen again next year. But unfortunately, had a lot of people filing, you know, close to that deadline, so they did resolve it by extending it by April 21st. Also, in May, coming up already, the Center for Public Funds Investment Management Training is coming up for me. I will be attending that as required by the Ohio Vice Code. And lastly, I'd like to report what we have collected for the month of April, and that is 1,982,009,06 compared to last year, very similar, 1.9 as well. Not a good, not a big increase, as you can start to see that as we get into the second quarter, starting to get narrowed down, and the only increase was by 0.32 percent. The refunds for this month was $33,425, also is reflective in April's collections. Year-to-date receipts collected so far, $8,335,253 compared to last year, $6,885,731. This reflects a 21% increase, but keep in mind, this again is reflecting from residuals coming in from the prior year and being paid in the first quarter. So that reflects $1,449,521. The net distribution applied due to the quarter percent reduction is $250,045, and then again, first quarter. Any questions? Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Karen. Larry Finch?
Good evening. I just have a brief report tonight. Couple of things. The tax agreement, the tax incentive review councils, I mentioned last time, had met. They reviewed nine Twinsburg occupancy program grant agreements and seven community reinvestment area grant agreements. Just kind of a quick summary, the top agreements, all nine of them, have been responsible for $1.9 million in income tax being paid to the city, and the reimbursement portion in total is slightly over $400,000. So it was a pretty good trade for us, I think, on those. Regarding to the seven CRA agreements, seven CRA agreements have been responsible for more than $46 million of payroll. I didn't do the income tax part for that, but it's $46 million of total payroll. So again, the community reinvestment area projects have been very beneficial, both to employees in the community and to the community as far as income tax. And we will be coming to council at the next meeting with legislation for the extension of the existing agreements. None of them were determined to be in error or in default, so they were all recommended for extension by the Turk. The City Planning Commission has recommended to council the adoption, consideration of the comprehensive plan for adoption. We'll be bringing the comprehensive plan to council, and I'll be talking to Shannon about a meeting date, whether it's the next meeting or the following meeting. We'd like to first present it in a PowerPoint overview and then give council time to consider the contents and then come back and have a discussion at a later date for potential adoption. Pardon me. Just a quick update on Cornerstone, Cornerstone Business Park and the progress there. You may be aware, we've gone through the first payment process for the Clean Ohio Revitalization Fund monies, and about $800,000 was dispersed for that purpose. They continue to make progress both on the Clean Ohio Revitalization Fund portions of the project and on the jobs-ready sites portion. We're expecting likely next week, the second request for reimbursement. We'll be reviewing that with Karen. And the hall associates, our consultant and certified professional has been doing a great job keeping things fairly well organized for us and making it easy on our end to review all the documentation that's required and make those presentations for reimbursement. With regard to the progress being made there, you still see piles of concrete everywhere. The major part of that job is pavement crushing and separation of the rebar from the pavement and then hauling it off, the rebar for recycling and the pavement crushing for road ballast or other recycling. It's been wintered on the site for storage until such time as they have an opportunity to dispose of it. The 400,000 square foot basement that was under the High Bay is still being dewatered. It's taken a long time. Hopefully, that'll be done in the next week or so. And then once that's done, they'll commence the demolition of the floor and backfilling of that basement area. There are two ponds that were used for oil separation lagoons. They're currently working on closure of those ponds. There's some things they have to go through for EPA to assure a safe closure. And they're also working on the boiler building and the, pardon me, the baler building cleanup of contaminated soils and just clean up generally of the demolition that occurred there. So things are moving. The next part of that is with the contract by, for the jobs-ready sites contractor, and they'll start doing some infrastructure after the site's been totally cleared. But things are moving. They're moving slower than I'd like to see, but they are definitely moving. And that's all I had for tonight.
Thank you, Larry.
I'd just like to mention, since Larry brought up the CRA agreements, I toured a company today in Twinsburg, one of our great companies, GED, and they were granted a CRA agreement which made an expansion possible for their company, and they really are being so innovative. They've just developed a new robotic piece of equipment that they're taking to trade shows, and what they've been able to accomplish since they added this new addition on is really amazing. They also got a grant for a piece of equipment that they developed, and it just makes you proud to see a successful business like that in our city and that we helped them grow through that CRA. So, and they mentioned it several times during our tour today and wanted to thank the city for being a partner with them and growing their business. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you. Derek?
Good evening, council. As Mr. Yates had mentioned, we kind of wrapped up all of our Easter stuff, the Adult Egg Hunt. It's a lot of work, that event. It's a lot of donations, so I want to thank any businesses local. A lot of them are local, but there are some other ones that are not that, you know, donate all the prizes for that sort of thing. We do buy some of them, but most of them are donated. We also had day camp registration as well. We opened up more spots, so we don't have as many filled up as we have in the past, so morning care and after care have some more availability. Mr. Yates said steals my thunder every last meeting of the month with Tiger Sharks Swimming going on as well, but that's good. He's paying attention in the meeting, so. And Tiger Sharks Swim Team sign up, resident only right now. We do have a few spots, but they're in the less preferred time slots, I guess. But we're going, moving forward with that. Safety Town for those kids going into first grade in the fall. That program is for them. That is all summer long. Tennis lessons start next week, and outdoor pool passes are on sale for anyone in the school district now, including Reminderville and the township. And again, the Fitness Center had some high numbers last month in attendance, weather-related for sure, but they're still doing well right now. And as Seth had mentioned about the Keep Twinsburg Beautiful Campaign, I sent out a communication yesterday or the day before, looking for an area within your ward that could use some cleaning up, and together with Daisy and the Environmental Commission, we'll start getting some residents to sign up and start cleaning up areas throughout the city. Couple events coming up. The Twinsburg Duathlon is June 1, and it's actually, it used to be a United States Triathlon Association sanctioned event, which made it a little bit more cumbersome to register. We've removed that part of it, so now it'll be a little bit cheaper and a little less cumbersome to register, hoping that increases enrollment. Rock the Park opens June 13, and we're actually having a preview party at Panini's on May 24, the Saturday. And we're working on the Taste of Twinsburg in conjunction with the library to show a movie at the end of that event on the square. And another thing people may not see at the pool, our new pool pumps are going in, in the little building there, and the new water feature is coming, and the slide will be done as well, wrapping up seasonal hiring. And with the Service Department, we finished our remodeling of the old township building. We call it the Center on the Square, right next to Twins Day, so we're going to start renting out the bottom floor of that to groups beginning in May. So you, maximum of 50 people, you have your own one-way-in, one-way-out using the muni lot. There's bathrooms, and you can have Cub Scout meetings, any sort of, you know, group meetings, Twinsburg resident meetings that you need. You still reserve them like you would through the community center. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Derek.
If there's any questions.
We're just really happy to have that extra space because you get a lot of requests for meeting rooms, so that's, with that, their own entrance, it's just going to work out great there. And the rest of the building, of course, is for the youth theater.
Yep.
It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ryan? Report on Glen Eagles.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Hasn't been the best of starts over there at the golf course with the weather we've been having. But so far this year, we've had 1,388 golf rounds compared to last year. At this time, we had 1,534, so we're down a little bit there, 146 rounds, down due mostly to weather. Better days are coming, we all hope. Few events in May we have scheduled so far, the first being May 9th, we have a demo day with Taylor Made Golf Company. May 18th, we have Bridgestone Golf Company coming in. They'll be on hand from 11 to 3 for golf ball fitting, something new we're doing this year. And May 22nd, Callaway Demo Day will be held from 5 to 7. All these events are on our driving range, free of charge to the residents of Twinsburg, and there's no appointments necessary for any of these events. Also this week, we welcome back our evening play. Our schedule is full as usual, which is great. And we also started signups for our Couples Golf League. It's been a very successful league we've been running here for five years now. We add a couple more events, so this year, I believe we'll have nine events. They're all on Saturday evenings with the shotgun start at 5:30. You can go on our website at gleneaglesgc.com for the event schedule and also for the signup application. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? That's it tonight, thank you.
That's it for tonight, okay. All right, I guess then we'll move on to legislation. First, we have Ordinance 31-2014. Shannon?
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 19-2014, the appropriations ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is on its second reading. Next, we have Ordinance 35-2014.
An ordinance amending salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city and updating classifications of employees to be known as the 2014 Salary Ordinance.
Okay, this is also on its second reading. Next, we have Ordinance 37-2014.
An ordinance accepting the bid of ANA Safety Incorporated, 1126 Ferris Road, Amelia, Ohio, 45102, for the 2014 roadway striping program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 37-2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, Mr. Yates seconded. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, 6-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 37-2014 as an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, was seconded by Mr. Sorese. Any discussion on that?
No, this is our annual road program. The total amount is $65,950.
Any other comments there? Okay. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 37-2014 passes by a 6-0 vote. Next, we have Ordinance 38-2014. Shannon?
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various special, various general revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 19-2014, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is also on its second reading. Anything? Okay, that's the end of our legislation. So now, moving on to unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Mr. McDermott? You have nothing? Mr. Sorese?
Nothing here, thanks.
Okay. You know, I would like to just real quick send a thank you to the department heads and the council people. I have a class assignment again where my students are emailing. You and I appreciate your response, if you could just see how excited they are. If you haven't received one, you will within the next few weeks, so I just would like to send a special thank you. I'd also like to congratulate Derek on last weekend, and we were up for the wet egg hunt and all those activities. They, everyone just does such a fantastic job, the staff, everybody kicks in, and it's just really a nice, a nice event for our community. And that's all I have. Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Roden?
I have nothing as well, thank you.
Mr. Yates?
Nothing this evening.
Mayor?
Just have one thing that I would like to mention. Issue 1 is going to be on the ballot on May 6th, and some of you may be wondering what Issue 1 is. Well, Issue 1 is the renewal of the State Capitol Improvements Program. And this program, over the last 27 years, 11,500 projects have been accomplished, and those are road, bridge, and sewer projects. Every single county has benefited from this program. A yes vote for Issue 1 will extend it for 10 more years, and 1.875 billion will be put into that fund for these infrastructure projects. This is a no-cost program for the taxpayers because the state issues general obligation bonds. So if you're considering how we're going to get some of our road projects done, some of our infrastructure projects, this might be a good thing for you to consider when you go to the ballot on May 6th, Issue 1. It really is a great state program that we have here. So just wanted to give a little public service announcement there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maestros?
Nothing, thank you.
Shannon?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with no further business then, I'd actually, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Fury from tonight's council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, seconded by Mr. Yates. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, now, with no further business, I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session to discuss matters pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22-G2 negotiations. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second. I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Roden.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll meet, we'll reconvene after the executive session.